First thing I'm gonna do is read off a list of names, addresses, and amounts. These will be for delinquent water bills. After I get done reading off this list, if you're here for one of those properties, that would be your time to speak. Patricia Ford, 113 East Prairie, 10916. Kevin Black, 113 West Monroe, 10967. Misty Walkup, 401 South Newton, 12564. Justin Williams, 538 South James, 9294. Brent Sherman, 205 East Maple, 3396. Randy Colbreath, 320 West Mill, 12724. Ryan Murphy, 233 West Prairie, 11311. Andrea Valencia, 310 South Iroquois, 12957. Alicia Wheelock, 305 West Union, 7223. Kaitlin Barron, 110 South Newton, 4516. And Amanda Chilcot, 125 North James, 14827. Is there anyone here to speak about any of these properties? Entertainer motion to disconnect.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unsafe buildings, judd.
First one is 222 East North Street for Michael and Tina Goodman. And they were to replace or repair the roof by September 15th. Repair the missing siding on the south side of the house by September 15th. And finish the siding on the northeast side of the dog pen by September 15th.
Okay, well, I was on the misunderstanding. I thought we had a month extension on the roof part until the next one. So I'm not sure. I haven't gotten a chance to go back and re-listen to the minutes from last month. So I do apologize. We are working on the siding as we rough down the rest of asbestos. We're putting up plywood and plastic to stop any air drafts. We just got the last of the siding today for that. Casing has doubled in cost in the last two months. So instead of being $200 a box, it is now $400 a box. We are making a lot of progress. I am trying my best to appease you guys and to keep moving on it. So I'm asking for a little bit more time. I do apologize for not having completed on the siding part of it. And on the roof, I would like clarification on that. Is that only the tarp part, which I agree 100% needs to be done? Or are we talking the main peak of the house and the top, the tarp area?
The tarp area definitely needs it.
I agree.
It needs a new roof.
It does need roof, and it does need new shingles on the north side. I'm sorry, south side of the main roof. I agree with that, but definitely the tarp section. But I'm not sure we're gonna be able to financially be able to get both the tarp and the main roof done this year. We can get the tarp one taken care of and the siding.
How much time do you need?
With finding out the cost jump on the siding, but like I said, I believe I have all that, if we can, I apologize. And trying to line up, I would ask for two months on the roof, but by that time winter should be in, and we should be done well before that. But I would like a little bit of leniency there.
And you don't need clarification if we grant this two months?
Correct. The main, so as we're all in agreement, the tarp has to be gone in the two months and the siding completed. And then the main roof on the other side, we will get done next summer if we don't get it done this summer, or this fall.
I would be inclined to recommend the two months, but I'd like to see some, something done within the next 30 days because who knows, who knows what kind of weather November's gonna bring?
And that's what I'm kind of afraid of where we dropped off on temperature-wise and then here we've had, what, two, three days of warm weather?
So what could you agree to get done by our October meeting?
Definitely the siding this time. The only thing I'm lacking is if anybody has a suggestion on somebody around that might have some scaffolding here in town that we could either borrow or rent cheaply at $76 from Lafayette for 24 hours to get 15-foot of scaffolding. And otherwise, I'm gonna be trying to take up four-by-eight sheets of a 28-foot ladder by myself because of my husband's hours.
Couple of different hands went up.
Yeah, I have ton of scaffolding up till she can use.
Beautiful, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay, so what could you agree to get done?
The siding will be completed.
Siding will be completed.
The siding will be completed.
By the October meeting, is that what you're saying?
By the next meeting, yes, it will be.
And any roofing at all?
With the roofing, once we take that tarp off, we have no choice but to continue and finish it because the one section of it leaks. So that's why it got tarp'd. I'd love to tell you yes, but I can't guarantee that until I have all the materials together.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we give her 30 days or to the next meeting for the siding and until the November meeting for the roof.
The tarp roof.
Tarp roof.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved in second. In all favor?
Aye.
And we have replaced a couple of windows in the process of all this also trying to appease and if we're gonna do all this much work to it, we might as well do it as we
Next one is 419 West Jasper Street, Tiffany Hood.
I cleared a couple of windows and I got painted almost to where our bedroom is. We're gonna have to paint again. I need a little bit more time on the paint for the house.
Let me run through the items and then we'll talk about each, your progress on each part of it so that they know what's been ordered and what's been done. You're ordered to remove junk and debris around the exterior of the property. Finish the windows by either replacing them, finish the windows and either replace the siding or repaint the siding, replace the broken and damaged windows, and that was it. So.
I got rid of the junk and everything. I ran a paint right beside our, one of our bedroom windows.
How much of the house is painted?
About a quarter. I got pictures of it, I just forgotten about me.
That's about right on the painting, about a quarter of it.
What about the junk and debris?
It's piled up, not everything in the back.
Painted a quarter of the siding, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He just kinda piled it up in the back. He's moved some of it.
When did you look at it?
That's just stuff up against the old barn or shed back there.
And show him what you're showing, board, so he knows what we're talking about, please?
Where he looks, put everything up against the building.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to.
What did we ask him to do last, last month?
Remove junk, junk and debris around the exterior, finish the windows, either replace the siding or repaint the siding. And then I had down, replace the broken and damaged windows. What's the deal on the broken and damaged windows?
They're not broken. Where, I guess before I got there, the, it was, one of the windows was, you know, boarded up. It's just missing like glass, but I can put that in.
You, you said last month that the windows will be in today, three total.
Yeah, I understand that. I said that it will be, they will be in today. I got a couple of them in. I just need to get the rest of the windows.
How many meetings have we been asking for the junk and debris to be removed?
Um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven before today. So we've been asking you for seven meetings, seven months, to remove the junk and debris, and we're still talking about junk and debris?
There's no junk. I got rid of all the junk. There's just debris around it that I need to clean up.
Okay, debris. Okay, well, it's been seven months.
I understand that.
You're not taking us seriously.
Yes, I am taking it seriously.
Okay, I move to impose a $2,500 fine if the junk is not gone by the next meeting. And there will be no tolerance by the next meeting. If that man tells us junk is still in that yard, you're gonna have 2,500 bucks to pay. I'll make a motion, extend it 30 days with that fine provision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got it?
Yep. When's the next?
The next one is 523 South James Hernandez.
Serrano. Ryan Hernandez, my second name.
I'm sorry. Miguel Serrano?
Yep.
I apologize. You were, okay. At the last meeting, the town council found that you willfully failed to comply with its prior orders and imposed a fine of $2,500, which had previously been held in abeyance. That was number one. Number two, the owner was required to repair or tear down the garage on the property on or before today. There was one garage, there were two originally, but there was one that was either gonna be repaired or torn down. Number three, you were required to appear tonight to discuss with the town council the status of these things, and in the event you failed to do so, they'd consider another $2,500 fine. So that's, we gotta talk about items one and two. Number four, the owner, if the owner repairs the garage, you must do so to the satisfaction of John Schwartz, the building commissioner. And I gave contact information for John. And number five, if he fails to remove the garage by September 15th, or fails to obtain John's approval on any completed repairs before September 15th, you're ordered to remove the contents of the garage by September 15th so that the town council can remove the garage and bill you for it. So tell us about the garage.
The garage, the roof got fixed. I got somebody cleaning the yard, helped me clean the yard. I'm working, I'm getting the doors replaced and do I need to paint the garage? Or what is the deal with the?
Have you checked with John before today about what repairs you've made to it? Is that, has there been any conversation?
Yeah.
Well.
He's had a lot of work around there.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask.
It looks outside, looks very nice compared to what it looks like. He's got all the brush and stuff out. It looks like he just put a couple temporary things, boards up for the garage doors, which he's supposed to, did the garage doors a long time ago. But the garage is the only thing that's left. The brush and everything is cleaned out.
Yeah, the roof is left replaced on it, so it's just literally just the doors. And if it needs to be painted, then I'll paint it, but just trying to find the time.
So what do you think still needs to, he said that he could paint the boards on the, are the doors if the town requires it? Is that what you said?
Yeah, I can paint the entire garage if that's what you guys want.
Okay, I don't know what it looks like, so I.
It needs, if he puts doors on it, he has to put them on right.
Okay, it sounds like he's got boards there now? Is that what we're?
Yeah, he looks like a couple pieces of plywood or something.
Okay.
Just leaning up against the building.
It needs a door on the garage?
All right.
Not pieces of wood?
That's the, I'm sorry, that's the original doors. Well, I just picked them up and put them up against it. Like I say, I'm just trying to find the time, trying to get it done.
Okay.
But I do have somebody that's helping me out, that has more knowledge on building or working with that kind of stuff.
Did you, did you get my letter because it was sent certified mail and regular mail? It looks like one was signed for and one was not. Did you get a copy of that letter?
I got one, my wife got one.
Okay. So you're aware of what was ordered to be done? And the reason I'm asking is you're aware of how to contact John Schwartz so that he can come meet with you and tell you without coming to a meeting whether it's acceptable or not? Just to keep this moving along, because now we're at the end of the year and we're gonna be running out of these to fix things. So I don't know what you're gonna order, but whatever, it should include contacting John for approval before the meeting so that we're not doing this every 30 days.
Well, I hate to bother you guys every 30 days. I want you guys to fix and done with it.
So this is their decision, I'm just the mouthpiece, but now they're gonna decide what, how to handle tonight's hearing.
How much time do you need?
Well, when the next meeting is to be done, I mean, I, I told the guy that was helping me that I needed to be done today, by today. Like again, you know, we're just trying to find the time because he has a full-time job, I got a full-time job myself, more than a full-time job. So there's just, but give me 30 days and I, I should have the thing painted and the doors put up. And I'm gonna work on the house. I'm working on the house probably as I go.
I will make a motion to allow another 30 days and also to include getting with John Schwartz in advance of the meeting for him to confirm the repairs.
All right.
It's been moved, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
That next meeting is October 20th. Thank you. And so is Hernandez not in there at all? Is it just Miguel Serrano?
Should be Serrano, I mean.
There's no Hernandez. I'll get.
I mean, but yeah, it should be Serrano.
Gotcha. Sorry about that. Next one is 502 South Newton Street, Joe Deal. At the last meeting, you're ordered to remove junk and debris around the exterior to cover the damaged front steps with a deck, which will require a building permit from John. Repair or replace the roof, trim the remaining trees, repair the wood trim windows, repair the brick stucco, trim and abate weeds and overgrown grass on the property. So let me just go through this one by one. On the remove junk and debris around the exterior of the property?
Yes, but there's a small, but yes.
Okay, so it, you, you did or you didn't do it? I mean.
He did.
Okay, so one is, so the junk is done. They cover the damaged front steps, did you do that?
No.
What are your plans with that, with regard to the damaged front steps?
I was going to put some concrete until I do the deck.
Like to patch it or something?
Yes.
And would that work? Would a patch work?
I think so. It'd be a lot easier, but would it make a little wood deck or?
I could build a wood deck, yeah.
Whatever. If he wants to do that, that's fine. If it don't work, it don't work.
Well, I'd prefer the deck.
How much time do you need to do a deck, realizing that we're in mid-September right now? Meaning we need to get this done?
I don't know how much time, because every time I say how much time.
You notice we keep asking you though, right? Not just commanding that you do things by a certain date. We're, we're trying to work with you, but I mean, we gotta wrap up some of these things. You think 30 days or 60 days? You could have the, a deck covering the steps?
60 days, but can I still meet in the 30 days?
Yeah, you'll need to come back in 30 days to talk about some of these other things too, but, but, okay, so I'm just, I'm just making a list, they're gonna decide. But deck, 60 days. Item number three was replace or repair the roof?
Uh, no.
Did, um, do you know what the, is it damaged? Can you tell that it's damaged?
There's a couple holes in the garage roof, I know.
Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, shingles missing.
So how long to fit, to repair the two holes in the roof and replace the missing shingles on the house?
Missing shingles are on the house or the garage? Missing, missing shingles on the house or garage?
Four different places, it's missing.
On the house?
On the house.
60 days.
Item number four was trim the remaining trees?
Yeah.
Okay, that's them. Item number five is repair the wood trim windows?
No.
Do you know what we're talking about though? Are there damaged trim on the windows? Okay, how much time do you need for repairing the wood trim?
Uh, 30 days.
Uh, number six is repair brick stucco. Do you know, do you know what we're talking about? Is there a place that is damaged that you, is it just one, one place or all over?
There's quite a few places between the bricks. It's just fault, uh, plaster or not plaster, but the mortar, mortar has fallen out. Quite a few places like that.
And is that a repair that you know how to do? Okay, is, how much time do you need to do that?
For maybe a couple weeks.
And then the last one was to trim and abate or remove the weeds and overgrown grass on the property. Have you done that?
So half the weeds are done.
Is it done or is it started?
If it isn't done, it's 90%.
Okay. So finish, can you finish that? Can you do that in 30 days?
Make an order, propose that we give him those timeframes that you just mentioned?
30 days on several and 60 days on several others?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the next meeting will be October 20th. And have you ever contacted John for him to come out? If you, if you have any questions about something, he has to come, he needs to come. You guys need to understand each other so that you're not being asked to do something you don't understand. So if you don't understand, get in touch with John. His number's on the orders. I think it is. Okay, very good. Thank you. Last one is 535 South Central Villanueva. At the last meeting, you were gonna remove the junk and debris around the exterior of the property by tonight. You were gonna have NIPSCO remove the electrical line that was hanging down, and that's all. What?
Um, all of the rest is gone, the NIPSCO said that he was gonna take the line off, but we're not sure if he did it.
You're not sure if they did it or when they're going to do it?
Okay, um, NIPSCO told them that they were gonna like put the line somewhere else, but because they were gonna use that same line to put the, like the line, like the light because they're on that too, to electricity the house.
Okay, so, but NIPSCO's gonna do that work. That's, that's on somebody else's clock. We're not, you're telling them that's not anything that you need to do, right?
Yeah.
And the junk and debris is removed?
Yes.
Junk and debris?
Nope, it's still there.
Okay, so, so I don't know who can contact John or who wants to contact John, but it looks like you guys need to come to an understanding about what he's calling junk and debris so that it can be cleaned up. Who, who needs John's number?
219-83-
863-26-
Yeah, you better say that again, John, please.
80.
Or 80.
Okay.
Make a motion, we extend it for 30 days?
Second.
So moved, been moved to second, all in favor?
Aye.
So October 20th is our next meeting?
Yep.
And hopefully we'll be all done by then. If you contact John and get an understanding, I'm sure we'll be done by then.
If you get the debris, I mean, you can't, can't figure out what NIPSCO is doing.
Yeah, they're gonna get to it when they get to it, so.
Get it cleaned up, it'll be done.
Thank you.
Anything else, John?
His car is clean up or?
Yeah, any permits or anything else?
Okay. There's a lot of people cleaning up their own property after I put floor hangers on. And there's a few of them that's not. And I've been giving some of them a second notice, just, and some of them I've been writing up that we're dealing with. But other than that, I'm doing a lot of cleaning up as far as the highway and weed eatings, getting some of the places cleaned up that should have been done a long time ago. And one other thing, I'm using my pickup golf cart and lawn mower and wagon, and my wagon's about broke, so I bought another wagon. And I don't need it because it won't, won't fit in my shed, but I would like to sell it to the town for $175 because I got, it's a nice little flat bed, all new wood on it, but it needs a new tire. And that's something that whoever's mowing, instead of coming back and forth all the time, they can put the weed eaters in there, they can put the gas in there, they can put a water jug in there and go as long as they want without coming in. And I can use it for cleaning up some of the places that need help. But my, mine's too small for it.
I don't have a problem with that.
I don't either.
Where will this be stored?
What'd she say?
Where are you gonna keep it?
Well, it's gonna be yours.
Okay, but you need to have access to it.
Yeah, well, during the winter I won't have.
Right, but through the summer?
I try to get up there at 8 o'clock in the morning to, Don's usually up there at 8 I had to buy a new hitch for it too, so that's why I, I didn't pay that much for it, I bought a new hitch, and I had to have my lawnmower hitch drilled out and I have to buy a new tire for it.
So you're gonna keep it up at the old firehouse?
Put it out behind or something. That's where it's at now, there's plenty of room in there.
Dustin wants it out of there. He said that one, Don brought it in, he wants it gone.
I know, but I just had that.
We really have no use for it.
Well, there is a use for it.
We don't have a use for it.
But the town does.
Well, we'll let you guys work that out. Anything else?
I think you need to sell it tonight. I mean, if it's gonna be the town's day, I'd be able to have it in there. I mean, I drive by, there's plenty of room.
It'll be settled. When Dustin made the remark that it had to be out of there, it didn't belong to the town, but I'll talk to Dustin about it. Anything else, John? Tina?
All right, at the end of August, in our general fund, we ended with $465,251.48. In our water operating, we have $66,129.88. Sewer operating, $292,311.97. Trash fund, $41,560.9, and that gives us a grand total of $1,997,054.92.
You need anything, Tina?
I do have a public hearing for our 2026 budget. So for our 2026 budget-
we have asked for $25,000 for our rainy day fund, $558,637 for our general fund, and property tax to be raised is $423,218. Local road and streets, $12,000. MVH, $60,000. CCI, $4,000. CCD, $40,000. Our NDOT grant, which is our paving, is $176,000. And our TIF, $100,000. On our CCD property tax to be raised is $19,534. Is there any other comments?
Questions, comments?
If not, following this meeting, any 10 or more taxpayers may object to a budget, tax rate or tax levy by filing an objection petition with the proper offices of Goodland Civil Town. Not more than seven days after the hearing. And then we will adopt next month. I also have an amendment for the 2025 salary ordinance adding code enforcement pay.
Make a motion. We adopt the ordinance?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the last thing... No, I lied. Not the last thing. Then I have a resolution for to-do transfers.
I'll make a motion. We adopt the resolution for transfers?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the last thing is Mick Murphett wanted to be here tonight to talk on behalf of the Athletic Association, but something came up and he couldn't be here. So he was wanting me to ask you guys if he would be willing to pay for mulch to be put underneath the playground equipment that's at the ballpark.
What kind of... What are we talking about? What kind of cost are we talking about? Anybody have any idea?
It's the rubber mulch.
My suggestion is I know Menards at the West Lafayette, when they have torn bags, they sell those bags for $1.50 a bag compared to $5 to $10 a bag.
This is specialized mulch that has to be underneath, put fully around. They can't just use regular wool?
No, no, it's the rubber mulch. Yeah, because that's what we've used under the deck because I don't want a bunch of bugs eating the treated wood. So we went wood, rubberized. They have black, red and other colors. It just, the only thing is you can't walk in and buy 100 bags at one time. But they have had, you know, 15 to 30 open bags at one time. So, I mean, it's a way to cut costs.
Athletic Association has almost $15,000 in their account. I'd say they could use that.
Out of their own...
Yeah, yeah. Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Is that it, Tina?
Yes.
Fire Department. Joe can't be here tonight. He had to work. Is there anybody here from the fire department? Dylan is off on vacation. Street water and sewer.
All right, I'm not going to read everything, but I do need... There's a few things you do need to discuss. We would like to pursue looking into a new bush hog for the tractor. The one we have now pretty much needs a full rebuild. It's pulled the seals on the driver shot. I got to put a full full bottle of urethane in it just to do the co-lane slot and it's gone by the time I'm done doing that. So if you guys...
Is that the only thing wrong with it? Just the seals?
It's beat up around the outside and the blades... It doesn't sound good when you turn it on and turn it off. Like it really slams on and off. It's up there.
What are we talking about for cost?
We have not looked into it. We would just, if you guys would be interested in us pursuing quotes, we'll get some quotes and you guys would be okay with that.
I'd say get some quotes.
All right, we will look into that. We do have a couple quotes. The first one on there, that is for the new building for the park board. The main hangup, when we discussed it last month, was the location. We didn't want to put it back up there at the park. We really didn't know if there'd be use for it and where exactly it would go. After talking with the park board, they would like to have a building. And our new aggregate building that's going to go behind the post office, there would be room for this building to go.
So when they say they'd like to have a building, they mean they don't necessarily need a building in the park. They just need a storage?
They just need a storage place, yes. So we can put that same building that Kevin quoted on right next to where that aggregate building is going to go behind the post office. This is just the same quote for tearing down the old building to put a new one up.
Why can't it just be added right onto the end of the aggregate building?
It possibly can't be.
That way you'd save one whole wall.
Correct.
Not the same construction as the aggregate building, but...
Right.
So we should come out if we added those two quotes together, which that one is $29,000.
Yep, and then the other three... Oh, no, this was...
And then the lowest quote of the three quotes for the aggregate building is $62,000.
Correct.
So for $91,000, we should be able to easily get both.
Yep.
And that could come out of our TIF money, I believe. Judd ruled last month.
If it benefits the TIF district.
It does.
And if it's on your economic development plan. What was the expenditure?
$91,000.
What was the purpose of... I was reading...
The build, the main part of the building, what we're calling the aggregate building, is will be constructed in such a way that we could keep salt and sand for the roads, gravel for when we have to fill various places and that sort of thing. And then this extension that we're talking of putting on the end of it, that would be for storage of park board equipment.
I believe that would work. That would be for the benefit of the TIF district. It seems akin to the fire engine example that Tom Pittman used.
Discussion?
If TIF money do it, I'd be in favor.
Absolutely. Okay, is that a motion and a second?
Do we know how much our TIF fund is?
Yeah, it's...
I think we had discussion about that last meeting, right? It disappeared.
I do want to comment.
Went down.
I do have a comment on behalf of the park board.
Okay.
We did want that building for storage contingent that we would not have the space at the old school. The old school building. I know the Harvest Hangout was going to hopefully have a meeting with you guys to kind of discuss what is that transition going to be or if the space is really not going to be available in the future. So I don't know if you guys want to wait on maybe having a couple meetings with the park board, with the Harvest Hangout, but...
Well, we could use it. They could use the storage. We could use the storage. So I would... It's been moved and seconded. I would go ahead and call for a vote. It's been moved and seconded to build the aggregate building with the extension for the park board equipment. All in favor?
Aye.
And I believe that is everything I needed to discuss unless you guys have something for us.
Anybody have anything for case?
Do you guys have an estimate of when the chip and seal will be done on South Newton Street?
We do not yet. I believe Dustin has reached out to people. They just have not given back...
Chip and seal?
I think we were going to... You guys were going to do chip and seal.
It was like seal coating and sealing.
And then repainting the lines.
Right, yeah. Crack seal and seal.
Yeah.
And then repaint the lines, yeah. And I think the window went in today, right?
It did. It looks great. Thank you.
They didn't leave a mess inside, did they?
No. Yeah, it looks good.
Anybody have anything else for case? Jackie?
So I started up last week, fire one and two training over in Rinsler, the district. And one thing now, kind of was brought to attention was something I never really thought about was... And it does affect a lot of our local departments. One out of every three firefighters will either get or die from cancer. And it's because of the chemicals that are in the air and in the environment that we're working in. They get onto the gear. They absorb into your skin from the gear. You breathe it in. I know a firefighter in Reddington has now gone through his second process of prostate cancer. We have others in departments surrounding us that are also looking at that. And I wanted to see if the town would be interested or be willing, which a lot of other towns have started to do, have supplied all of their volunteer members with an insurance that would cover... It would be like a cancer, stroke and heart attack insurance. Rinsler has one that they got through their town insurance that gives that and it's a one-time $30,000 payment just to go towards like whatever is needed for that individual if they're ever diagnosed, one-time fee. So I wanted to just give some packets here. I went on to IDFA's page and found some information of other programs that they use. I know Afflix also, another supplementary one. But this has got some information on here with just facts of how much greater firefighters face different types of cancer, not just men with prostate cancer and that, but also breast cancer, lung cancer. Skin cancer is a big issue as well. And with these people, because I'm also on the department, but with people that are volunteering for this, they're doing it in their own time, their own money, their own health insurance and that. But they're doing it for their communities.
Do you have an extra copy of that? Would you please give it to Tina? Tina, would you get that to Jim Schoen and see if he's... There's anything that we could do?
So I just wanted to bring that to your guys' attention to see if you guys would be willing to look at like our current insurance or if there's an option.
Jim Schoen is our insurance agent. Tina will forward a copy of all that to him and get his advice because, you know, he advises us on such things. And get him to see what we can do.
Thank you.
Okay, we have some water leak letters. This one is from Brooke Brown and Brock Sarcy. We have found a leak under our house at 206 East North Street. For the last three months, we're asking for money back on sewage portion of our water bill. Please let us know if anything further is needed. You would say that that did not go down the sewer?
Correct.
I'll make a motion that we give them a sewage adjustment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This one is from Sarah Roush. I would like to ask for a sewer adjustment fee. I had a major leak in my water line and had to use the sump pumps to get over six inches of water out of my basement, 133 West Prairie. When she used the sump pump, where'd the water go?
Outside of the window. That's my... Her water heater around it is leaking and it just went out.
Okay, but it did not... She didn't pump it down the sewer?
No. It was outside, but she got a hose. Her and her hoses.
I'll make a motion. We give them a leak credit?
Second.
This one is from Tom and Margie Kreip, 310 North Newton. On August 21st, noticed a water leak on the sidewalk early morning and had been leaking through the night. Went to the town hall to ask for help, started mowing mid-morning grass. It was wet. Long story short here is she had a water leak and it appeared to be in her yard and it appears to be fixed. It did not go down the sewer. I'll make a motion that we grant that leak adjustment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And this is from Dan and Nancy Roush. What's up with the Roushes having water? I am assuming we have had a small leak for several months. On August 20th, we noticed water bubbling up in our yard coming from the line between the meter and the house. The morning it was noticed, Damon Ward was called to fix the hole. He found two separate holes, leaks, and replaced the line from the meter to the house and writing this letter in hopes to get a credit for water that has leaked into the yard. Obviously leaked into the yard. I make a motion that we grant that leak credit as well?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Trick or treat hours. How about 5:30 to 8:00 on Halloween?
What did you say?
5:30 to 8:00. Any... You guys good with that?
Yeah. Seems like it's almost longer than what they really go, so I think you can cut it back a little bit, but that's okay.
We had a request for a... From Mike Rowe, who wants to build five houses on the north side of town. He's requesting that the town give him a zero interest loan of 48-8 to help with this. And then he would pay back half of that and after the last house goes up, he wants us to forgive the last half of that, which would be 24-4.
I thought he was proposing to use TIF money for that.
He don't care where the money comes from. We were asking if TIF money is good.
I just forwarded you an email from Tom Pittman, who replied about that. And I was asking, Tom, does that need to be set up as a new residential TIF district if it was going to be using TIF funds? And he didn't understand what I meant by a new residential... I don't know that he was involved. His associate was involved when we set up the residential TIF on Yurkoye. So Tom, that's why I don't think Tom knows that we've got an area that's identified as a residential TIF already. I was referring to it as a second residential TIF area. Anyway, so look at his... Look at the email I just forwarded to you.
Okay, would you say that it's... He's approving it or not approving it?
Not approving it, but suggesting a way to maybe do it. Suggesting an alternative method. So you got to look at this. You'll have questions, but we'll get this hammered out tomorrow.
Okay.
Look at the email that I've sent you. I know he's waiting. I know that Mike's waiting.
Okay, well, we'll table that for tonight then. Judd, anything else?
I did that resolution from the last meeting for that swapping of the land and the deed, if you want to sign those. And then I've got a deed for Dino Enterprises so that we exchange the two parcels to put your parcel in his name so it's next to his building and his parcel in your name so it's next to your building. And it needs... I wasn't sure despite your email where we discussed it. I couldn't tell who you were saying should pay the follow installment of 24, pay 25 on the Dino Enterprises property, which you said was like a hundred bucks. So I've got a blank line there for who pays. That should probably be decided in the resolution so that I can tell Tim what to expect.
I make a motion the town pays.
It's been moved all seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, Judd?
Nope.
Anybody have anything else they'd like to discuss? Counsel, Bill?
Yeah, last week or last month, I heard you talking about you had to have an executive session to decide something and I was going out the door. What did you decide at the executive session?
We didn't.
We didn't have an executive session? You happen to know what the subject was? I do not remember that discussion.
Yeah, you were going to get with Mike Rowe and Trisha Dowd, Trisha Potts.
Oh. Yeah, no, we didn't have that. But we did just talk about that, so we'll be talking about it again next month though. No, we probably won't do an executive session. We'll probably just do it at the regular meeting. Anybody else? Nobody? Ma'am?
I was going to... I just... I talked with Tina and she said that we would need to get a form from you, a BZA, for interesting looking at putting solar panels up on our property.
Yes. If you give me... Did you give me your email address before? Do I have that? If you give it to me, I'll email you the packet.
Okay, thank you.
Super, super simple.
Anybody else?
Okay, so I had agreed to it left at my house. It said for two abandoned vehicles, which were not abandoned. One was broken and I moved it to my dad's property until I get it fixed.
Where's your dad's property?
He lives in Mon. But they're, I mean, they're both plated and insured and we drive them. They're my husband's work vehicles. And one of them is I still have in my house because it's not abandoned. We just don't drive it every day. But it is plated and insured. Also, on the same ticket, it said that my grass was a bit tall, but Jackie's always mowed my yard all summer, weekly, so... And my grass hasn't been tall. Also, it said for weeds. I do have them weedy, but...
Where's your property?
532 South Newton. I know most people would consider weeds... They're not. I'm a very holistic person. I have a lot of herbs. I do weedy the weeds, but I have about three spots where there are native plants to new county that grow. And I love them grow because I make herbal teas and they use them. So I'm not going to get rid of them until I harvest them to make teasers. But I was just wanting to know... Are, I mean, is there a set amount of vehicles for a lot of town?
There's a specific definition of an abandoned vehicle and it's not what a lot of people think it is. And so, but that's online. You can go online and see that in our codes. John, can you address all these things that she brought up?
Black Ford pickup's been there for months. I think I'm not for sure. I know the spindle on it is rusted. They got it back and going, so it's... Don't worry about that now. The other car was a... Is... Had it drove underneath a tree.
It's next to a tree. It's my husband's Escalade. We just don't drive it a lot in summer. He uses it for work in the winter. It works out in the rain, so...
As far as the vegetation, I mean, if they're... She's using some of it for food, for spices and stuff, I guess. Don't know what you can do about that.
I'm not clear on which house we're talking about.
Had the black Ford Ranger sitting out there with the front left wheel off of it every day.
Just the next house, next to... Yeah, north of Sue Miller.
I think there's a camper there too or something in there. Isn't there a camper there also or something?
Yeah, there's a camper. But there's only a few campers around town.
The camper is also plated and insured.
With current plate, not just plated, with current plates?
No, current plates, current insurance. I can provide all of that if I need to. And also for the vehicles, they're all insured and plated.
Discussion? It sounds like she's complying.
Well, I think the vehicles that have to be moved every so often, if they're sitting there for a certain period of time.
That's part of that, you know, if a vehicle's just sitting there and don't move, that's...
Do I need to like move it to a different spot?
She's limited on the driveway. I mean, she only has parking out front.
Right, and it does get quite congested there at times. That's part of the problem.
Doesn't look very good. Looks like it's 20 days. Every 20 days it has to be moved.
Yeah, they don't do it. Move it, drive it.
The pickup's gone, so I mean, that's...
Right, but I mean, when I get the wheel bearing back on it, it will be back.
Okay. Well, it sounds like you're pretty much in compliance. It does get very congested there. If you could help with that, that'd be wonderful.
Yeah, well, I mean, so on the weekends, I mean, I have a big family and we all meet for Saturday or Sunday dinner, depending on everybody's schedule I have. So I do have, I mean...
Well, I'm talking more through the week. It can get quite congested. But it sounds like you're pretty much complying, but if you could just do something about the congestion and that's not an order, obviously, because... But John will check into it further, but it sounds like she's complying, but check into it a little bit further.
She said she'd have the pickup out there by night. She does.
Okay, so it just sounds like you're...
Yeah, I don't want no problems.
We don't want problems either. I think you're okay. Anybody else?
Put that back, John.
We'll be... That concludes the items on the agenda. We'll be up here reviewing and signing claims. After that, I make a motion we adjourn.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
So Kettleman had an audit. An auditor...